Hello, everybody, and welcome. Today is Monday, October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and we'll be calling the Planning Commission meeting to order here at six thirty P. M. Our Planning Commission meeting tonight is being held in person and as well as virtually on Zoom. As the Chair, I'll be leading the meeting, and the public will be welcome to participate when they're invited. Real-time participation can be in-person, online via Zoom, or by telephone. This meeting is also available for viewing on BCTV as well as on the city website. If you're unable to participate this evening and you'd like to submit public testimony, I encourage you to email your comments to city staff or mail your comments directly to City Hall. The online participation instructions are through Zoom, so you log in at zoom.us backslash join and type in our meeting ID. That number is eight nine zero six nine five seven one five four eight. Once you're logged into the meeting, please use the chat feature on Zoom to tell the moderator which item you wish to speak to. And if you're experiencing audio problems, we suggest you leave the meeting and then rejoin. Additional instructions on how to participate are posted online at the city website, www.burnsvillemn.gov, and that's in the public meeting calendar. Telephone participation instructions. You can also call into this meeting at six five one three seven two eight two nine nine. The meeting ID is the same as the Zoom meeting, eight nine zero six nine five seven one five four eight. And then for each public hearing, I'll open up a time when callers may speak to that item, and we'll give you more instructions at that time. And your call will be muted until it's your turn to speak. Please note there may be a slight delay due to the difference in technology. And if you're speaking by phone, please mute your computer so you don't get the echo. Okay, the first item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda from commissioners? No changes. Any changes from staff? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Motioned by... Motion and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Second item is the approval of our minutes from our September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four meeting. Any changes to the meeting minutes from commissioners? No changes. Any changes from staff? No changes. Is there a motion to...?
Motion.
And is it seconded? Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. Our third item, this is a continued public hearing. This is the application of CSM Park Place LP for a planned unit development amendment to add a second drive-through lane and construct a new canopy structure on the Chick-fil-A restaurant located at twelve hundred County Road forty-two West. Mr. Kevin Shea is our planning consultant, who will present. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. So tonight for you is the continued hearing for the Chick-fil-A PUD amendment to add a second drive-through lane and canopy at their site at twelve hundred County Road forty-two West. It is part of a larger mixed-use area is the zoning. It's an existing site that's been developed. This would... All the additions to this site are kind of focused on the east side of the building, as that's where the location of the drive-through and the canopy are. The two roads on that corner that are impacted are Burnhaven and County Road forty-two West. So this PUD amendment has two deviations. So it's to allow a second drive-through lane and overhead canopy. There's one deviation for each of them. A deviation to allow a seven-foot setback for the drive-through lane, where ten feet is required, and then a deviation to allow a twenty-three-foot setback for the overhead canopy where thirty feet is allowed or is required. I'll note the previous application you saw, back in about March, had greater deviations that are now than are presented now. So to compare, the deviation for the drive-through is very similar, because that was kind of the same widths for the drive-through lanes that are required to meet vehicle standards, turning movements, things like that. However, the deviation for the overhead canopy is greatly reduced. Before, it was around five, around five feet, and now we're at twenty-three. So much less, and that's due, as I'll go through, that the overhead canopy is essentially extending over one drive-through lane instead of both. So site plan, I zoomed in. It's not going to show the whole site, because all the improvements are focused, like I said, on the east and the south side of the building. There's an existing single-lane drive-through. The proposal is to expand that to a double-lane drive-through. If we're looking at the plan, the... As you come around the corner, it continues as two drive-through lanes rather than skinning up. So there's two menu boards existing today. It goes down to one drive-through around the corner as... And then maintains that through the rest of the drive-through. The proposal is to expand to two drive-through lanes and carry that all the way through. So on the corner, there's the dark-hatched area. That's a removal of some curb to allow an expansion for the corner to have two drive-through lanes. And then the second drive-through lane extends further east from the existing drive-through lane. So the farther-away drive-through lane from the building, also the one closer to the street. I'll mention a couple of the associated improvements that you saw last time. So they have the overhead canopy. This time, it's only over one drive-through lane, but there's still the crosswalk servicing to the other drive-through lane for service. That eliminates all encroachment from that overhead canopy. So there's no longer foundations or anything like that within the drainage and utility easements that require encroachment agreements and things like that. So now there's really only one encroachment into the drainage and utility easement, and that's the drive-through itself, and only at a small portion. Another big one that's changed from the last time we saw it is the sidewalk is proposed to be relocated. So before, there was a sidewalk in a sidewalk easement that the city has rights to. Now, the applicant is proposing to reconstruct the sidewalk further out, essentially towards Burnhaven while still maintaining a boulevard that meets the minimum standard from Burnhaven Drive, but allows for adequate spacing between those drive-through lanes or that further-most east point of the drive-through lane and the sidewalk for snow storage and screening. What that effectively does is mean they don't need to use a fence to screen the drive-through. They can use natural landscaping, because there's now the space adequate to have landscaping survive in that area, and also for the snow storage. Those were the two big concerns from last time. For the elevations themselves, the east elevation, basically, this is the drive-through side facing Burnhaven. The only addition to this elevation from what exists today is that overhead canopy, and that will extend out, like I said, over one drive-through lane. The landscaping plan, they've concentrated all the additional landscaping. So there's a hundred and ninety-one additional shrubs, additional ornamental trees, additional perennials on here. They've concentrated pretty much all on the east side of the building and partially on the south side as well, basically the two street frontages. The intent there is to screen the drive-through and the vehicle headlights as much as possible. So you'll notice there's quite a lot shown on there. Most of the screening pieces are large shrubs, so like potted shrubs that get planted, and then the maturity would screen the drive-through fully, mixed in with some smaller shrubs, some ornamentals, and some perennials in there. And this does meet the screening ordinance to screen that drive-through so that lights aren't flowing onto Burnhaven and onto County Road forty-two, but mostly Burnhaven. So some planning considerations for you. So there's two deviations from the zoning ordinance as part of the PUD. There's minimal impact on that existing DNU easement, as there's only one encroachment now, as there was four previously. And it's a smaller encroachment that does not have any... Another bullet point, it doesn't impact any of the underground utilities. So we've already checked with utility companies. There are no underground utilities that would get impacted by this project. And now there's greater sidewalk separation from the drive-through, being five-and-a-half feet of separation between the two where they were at less than a foot last time. So much greater area for snow storage and allows for natural screening versus fence screening. So with that, staff does now recommend that the planning commission recommend approval of the PUD amendment to expand a single-lane drive-through to two drive-through lanes and construct a new canopy structure at the Chick-fil-A restaurant at twelve hundred County Road forty-two West, subject to the following conditions. So number one, the project shall be completed in accordance with the plans submitted and as amended by the conditions of approval. Any significant modifications of the plans as determined by planning staff shall require review and approval by the planning commission and city council. Number two, the conditions of previously approved PUD shall remain in full force and effect. Number three, uses listed in the underlying zoning district as permitted and/or accessory are allowed in addition to the specific uses in the approved planning and development. Four, all outstanding conditions in the engineering memo dated August first, two thousand and twenty-four shall be addressed. Number five, the sidewalk adjacent to Burnhaven Drive shall be constructed by the applicant as shown on the plans dated September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Number six, an encroachment agreement for the drive-through shall... Being located within the drainage and utility easement shall be recorded prior to release of the building permit. And number seven, signed permits shall be obtained prior to the installation of any signs. And with that, that's my full presentation. So I'll stand for any questions from the commission, and the applicant is present tonight as well.
Thank you. That was a great presentation. I appreciate you providing the context between what's being presented today and what's presented previously. That was super helpful. My first question is, the distance from the... The sidewalk is moving. It's moving a little closer to the road. What is the distance now, and what is the proposed distance? Like, how much is the sidewalk moving? Do you know?
It's about five feet, roughly. I mean, it changes a little bit, because of just the nature of the sidewalk and the street versus not being parallel to what's happening on-site. But it's six feet from Burnhaven Drive. It basically parallels Burnhaven Drive, so it's six feet. Today, it currently is about eleven, eleven-and-a-half feet-ish. So it's getting about five feet closer, and that allows for some of that distance for the drive-through spacing.
Thank you. Questions from commissioners? Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I have two questions. One, the safety of Chick-fil-A staff having to cross over into that second lane. Are they in a safe position while they're waiting to deliver? Or are they protected? You know, the idea of them crossing over in front of other cars is a concern that I have.
I can answer half of that, and I'll probably have the store owner answer the other half. In terms of a site planning perspective, yes, it's safe, because they have crosswalks and identified crossings for those workers. In terms of their operations and where the workers are at and then servicing the drive-through lane to the outside, I'd probably let the store owner actually answer that, because that's more of an operation than a site planning. But in terms of having safe crossings, they do have two identified crosswalks within the drive-through lane to allow them to access the second or the outside drive-through lane.
I guess I have another question. All right. When I've been over there, there is a large utility box as you're getting ready to leave the drive-through area. Is that at risk, or does that need to get moved?
There's no plans to relocate that currently, and the proposed landscaping... So you'll see it on the screen here in that kind of the island that's up on the northeast corner. They're planning to screen that utility box from both the drive-through lane and from Burnhaven Drive. So there's a number of smaller plantings on the inside towards the drive-through. And then there are some larger shrubs along with other screening plants on the outside towards Burnhaven Drive. But there's no plans to relocate that.
Right. But are the cars going to be ended up closer to that utility box with this new project?
Yes, a little bit. Where the second drive-through lane does become closer to Burnhaven Drive, but in terms of where they actually exit the site, no. That access where the drive-through customers currently leave the site on that northeast corner...
Right.
Showing on here, that access or that distance is not changing. So that that single exit from the drive-through lane is still the only single exit from the drive-through lane. So both drive-through lanes come back into one to leave the site, essentially, through that exit. And there's one further... I'll go back to this image. There's one further north. So there's essentially two. There's one right at the edge of the building, and there's one where they actually leave what is the Chick-fil-A site and enter out into the larger mixed-use area, and then essentially typically taking a right to go onto Burnhaven Drive.
Commissioner John?
Thank you, Chair. The only question I have is the distance between the second drive-through lane and the path it looks like. On one of the slides, was that three-point-five feet? Is that the... Is that the closest it gets together? I see that three-point-five.
The three-point-five is actually a dimension from the edge of the sidewalk... Or sorry, the sidewalk easement. So there's the existing sidewalk easement that had... Has the existing sidewalk within it. The proposed sidewalk gets moved out of that sidewalk easement closer to Burnhaven Drive. That distance is actually depicting the edge of the curb for the drive-through to the sidewalk easement, where the existing sidewalk is, not where the proposed sidewalk will be.
Oh, okay. And so what would be the distance between the sidewalk at the closest point? Or do you know?
There's a... The closest is a five-and-a-half-foot separation between the corner. It's essentially right, pretty much where the three-and-a-half-foot distance is to the sidewalk. And then as it moves north in the site, you notice that the... They essentially diverge from each other. It grows to about a distance of eighteen feet at the greatest point. But five-and-a-half is the pinch point. Eighteen feet is the greatest point.
And the distance from... Regulation distance from the sidewalk to a street side is?
Five feet.
Five feet?
Yeah. And they'll have a six-foot boulevard versus a five-foot boulevard.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson?
The... When I was looking at the south, I mean, the east elevation, where are the doors as the employees will come out?
So there's... I'm not sure if it shows it on here, actually.
Do they face north and south?
There are existing... There is a door. I don't think it's affected on the elevation. And I might let the store operator answer that as well, because he'll know the operations of where employees are coming out of and going into versus the kitchen and the interior. But it's my understanding that they'll be under the canopy on the inside of the drive-through lanes adjacent to the east elevation.
Yeah, because when you look at the south elevation, that's a door that's existing to the outside dining.
I believe there's a door on the eastern side that the employees access in and out of. I'm just not seeing it on the eastern elevation.
Any other question? Commissioner Timmerman?
Just a comment. I mean, you worked with a lot of challenges to get here. And honestly, I think this is a great compromise. I'm really glad the applicant went back to the drawing board, literally, to make this happen. So thank you for the work you've done.
Seeing no further questions, we'll move this to the public hearing section of the meeting. So it is six forty-six P. M., and we'll open up the public hearing. If there's anybody in the audience that wants... Wishes to speak to this item, please approach the podium, and I think we'll probably have the applicant come up just to answer some of our questions. And that'll give people on Zoom a chance to get ready. If you could state your name and your address for the public record, please.
My name's Alex Park, and I'm from one-one-one West Jackson Boulevard, Chicago, Illinois.
Andrew Johnson. I'm the restaurant owner here in Burnsville, twelve hundred County Road forty-two West, Burnsville, Minnesota.
Thank you. Just questions for the applicant? Commissioner Hamilton?
Are there other locations that you have this same tightness in configuration? Or is this unique to the Chick-fil-A's in the area?
There are other locations that have a dual-lane drive-through, very similar to the proposal that we have. I am actually not aware of site constraints specific to other locations.
And from the civil perspective, we have worked with other Chick-fil-A's as well, and there are more, even more tighter locations than this. And so having that extra bit of space that we have on that eastern side allows this configuration to not be as tight.
Where will the employees exit the building to deliver to that eastern lane?
So there is... The plan is correct. There is no door on the east side of the building. The main access for them will be the door on the south side of the building, which enters onto our patio. There is a gate that exists on the patio fence that they can enter and exit through and make their way over toward the drive-through window from there.
Any other... Commissioner Anderson?
That being the case, is there a sidewalk that they'll be walking on so they don't have to walk in the drive-through lane to get all the way up to the... To deliver?
Can I speak to that?
Yeah. So in these plans, there is no specific sidewalk dedicated just for the employees. But the two-to-three-foot striping that we have shown in the middle of the lanes is designated as Chick-fil-A's standard width for safety protocol for employees to be able to walk up and down the lanes without any cars hitting them in any sort of way. And the lanes itself are already built to be about nine to ten feet wide. So that's more than enough space for most cars and even trucks to fit through. So being in that two-to-three-foot interior lane provides that safety for the employees to walk through.
Commissioner Hamilton?
Clarify. So they'll be walking between the cars then, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Commissioner Anderson?
Have you thought about putting a door near the drive-through itself?
I believe for this scope of this project, Chick-fil-A has not thought of doing that yet, but...
It is frankly, it is something I would love to do. There's a pretty large expense to doing that. But you will see some Chick-fil-A's that instead of a drive-through window, there is a drive-through door that employees can walk right in and out of in that space. So it is a plan I'd love to look at in the future.
Seeing no further questions, appreciate you coming in. And again, as Commissioner Timmerman said, appreciate you working through the process to get this to the right spot.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone on Zoom or on the phone that wishes to speak to this item?
I do not see anyone.
Okay. Then we will close the public hearing here at six fifty and turn it back to commissioners for discussion and/or a motion. Commissioner John?
Yeah, I have to say, I'm really impressed. When I first saw this, when this first came before us, I thought, there's no way in heck they're going to be able to do this, less moving the building over a couple spaces. But you guys did a really good job here. This looks really good to me. I can't see why we can't move forward with it.
So are you... Are you going to make a motion?
I saw that coming. Okay. So I would like to make a motion that we, the planning commission, recommend to the city council to approve the PUD amendment to expand a single-drive-through lane to two-drive-through lanes and construct a new canopy structure at the Chick-fil-A restaurant at twelve hundred County Road forty-two West, subject to the seven... The seven conditions listed that listed before.
There's a motion. Is there a second? Second? Seconded? Seconded? Commissioner Radek went seconded by Commissioner Radek. So motion is seconded. We'll have a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Pardon me?
John's opposed.
Oh, you were... There is a post?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So there's one opposed. So then the motion will be presented at our next city council meeting on November fourth. And because this was not unanimous, then it goes... It'll be presented at the city council rather than on their consent agenda. I apologize. I was...
It's okay.
Okay. We're on to our next item. And this is item number four. This is adult-use cannabis zoning work session. And presenting will be Mr. Mike Moroslaw, our planning manager.
All right. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. We're going to do a little workshop session here about cannabis, adult-use cannabis regulation, and where we are at with it. And in general, legislation was passed, and a little bit of a workshop we held with the city council back in August. So background, in two thousand and twenty-three, legislature legalized adult-use cannabis and related businesses. However, at that time, majority of cities in the metropolitan area passed moratoriums. The language is very vague. There's a lot of details. And as part of the legislation, they were required... The states required to create the Office of Cannabis Management, or OMC. So the purpose of the OMC is to create, implement, create regulation, and implement the new state statute. So the OMC was created. They did start moving forward, and they provided guidance to cities here on how to implement adult-use cannabis. Now, as part of the state statute, local governing authorities, like us, can adopt reasonable restrictions on time, place, and manner. But we cannot prohibit cannabis or any... Or other cannabis supply chain uses. So this past June, the OMC did provide guidance to cities, a model ordinance and documents, which was included within your packets. A lot of detail provided in there on how cities should implement cannabis. So at this time, we are actually proposing to amend Title X only, which is the zoning restrictions. We're not looking at doing Title III, which is our business regulations. That's where our licensing would be in. So under the state statute, you are allowed to have a stable-issue licenses to users, and then the cities can register them for a fee. And so... But this time, we're not doing that. They're still doing rulemaking, the OMC, until the end of two thousand and twenty-four. So we're going to wait till about January to amend Title III for the registration use. But we are looking to amend Title X at this time so we can provide guidance to these users as they come online, which they're expecting to issue the first licenses in the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-five. And as part of this workshop too, please feel free to ask questions as we're going along. There's no forum to this, so if you have a question, please shout it out.
I actually have a question.
I was going to say, we'll suspend Robert's rules, and it'll...
Thank you. Pepper Mike with questions. Okay. My recollection is that sales begin in January. Is that correct?
They'll start issuing licenses in January. It'll probably take a little time for them to get up and running. But I believe the window just closed for the... They're going to do some... There's some earlier licenses that can be issued to... Let's skip ahead here so I can actually get the term correct here. To specific users that are... I'm sorry, I'm dropped. Losing the term right here. There is a specific group of licenses that could be issued before time, and that's what they're going through now. They'll be issued around the first of the year. I apologize for not knowing that term off the top of my head right now, but...
That's all right. I just wanted to make sure that we're in...
Yep.
You know, lockstep with...
Yes.
OCM.
And then also to state too, though, this product we're talking about is cannabis, marijuana, which you'll see now that's presently at liquor stores and other establishments or other smoke shops for leisure. That's hemp-deprived THC. So there's a difference. So right now, everything you can buy is all hemp-deprived marijuana at local retail establishments. Under the new law, once these licenses get issued, they can start selling marijuana THC deprived... Derive marijuana deprived THC derived. THC, excuse me. It's one word I have trouble with at the council. I mean, I still have problems now, so...
All right. But it sounds like your timeline is...
Correct.
Okay.
A lot... Well, I'll talk about here in the later slide too. A lot of cities are at the same place. And we're all kind of... Kind of this learning area. So we're all also trying to get our ordinances in place, especially zoning, by the first of the year. So if we do get one, we can say, hey, you're allowed to go here. This is what your use is. And I'll talk about that a little bit more at that later in the presentation.
Okay, yeah. Please carry on.
So check my notes here. All right. So within the state statute, there is thirteen licenses that the states can issue. On the screen, there is twelve. One that's on here is cannabis-related events. That here, we don't... Not included in this. That's more your administration Title III, if you're going to hold an event, to kind of go with the licensing. But on the screen, all these uses here do fulfill a part of the cannabis supply chain. So most of them are kind of self-explanatory, but there is two on here I want to point out, the micro-business and mezzo-business. They're a little different. The best analogy that I think you can come up with is they're kind of like the brewery of cannabis. They can manufacture... They can produce, manufacture, and sell the product on-site. So what they're trying to do is kind of fill the gap. A lot of times, there's these larger corporations that do cannabis. These are for your small to moderate local dispensaries to be able to compete against the bigger corporate users. So those, those two. Also, we have medical marijuana in there, manufacturer cannabis... Manufacturer, excuse me, wholesale, edible manufacturer, and over retail. So nice part for us, we do have an existing medical marijuana ordinance, and that's a section we're going to update. So on the screen here is our current zoning standards. As part of the OMC regulations, they request cities treat marijuana cannabis like any other use in the community. They don't want you to single it out, so they recommend treating it like any other use. So what we did then as staff, we took a look at our existing uses and compared what the uses that were on the previous screen to what current is allowed by our zoning code. So on the screen here, you can see that the retail, permit retail locations are our general business districts, our B-two, B-three, B-four, mixed-use, and TOD. But medical marijuana is only allowed in the B-two, B-three, B-four and mixed-use, not TOD. You know, the thought... You know, the thought behind that was the amount of people, the density of that area, that we didn't want to have retail sales in that general area or the medical marijuana. That was the intent behind not allowing the TOD. So then we do allow for cultivation indoors only. There's a lot of agricultural land in Burnsville. So with that, we require a conditional use permit and but the intent is here is to treat it like we could, other similar uses.
Does that make a difference as far as there's no residential on here, right?
Correct.
So you can't cultivate, you're gonna have it in your garden or anything of those lines, or you can't even sell it from your house?
You can, you can produce, you can grow up to eight plants in your house. I believe this is the ordinance doesn't have a certain amount on, in possession at your house, but that is, you're not, you have to have a license to distribute through the state of Minnesota.
Okay.
They can actually cultivate right now.
That is legal.
For their own personal use.
Yeah.
Correct. So another thing that the state statute does allow cities to do is create buffers, to separate, you know, cannabis retail from specific sensitive land uses such as schools, daycares, residential treatment facilities and parks with minors. Now, this is only for retail. This is not everything else. So only retail you can put buffers around. And those buffers range from schools, you can go up to a thousand feet, can't go more than that under state statute, but you can go less. You can daycare's five hundred, residential treatment facilities five hundred and parks with minors five hundred. So the parks one's very vague. It does not give a clear definition of what that means. It says minor activity. Well, I, my house has a park behind it. It's this open space. It's a wooded area. There's always kids in there. So when we mapped it out, we included all the parks on the screen. So all the parks were mapped out with a five hundred-foot buffer. We did the maximum buffer for daycares and schools as well. As you can see, it covers up a lot of the city. Now, also shown on the screen is we currently do have forty-two state-registered hemp businesses. They're willing, they're able to sell hemp products. But under state statute, and we'll get to the next screen here, under the licensing that's coming out here, they're not guaranteed to get a license. So we'll get there for, we'll get there in a second and explain, but there's forty-two currently that are selling hemp and they're spread out throughout the community. And so the conversation we have as a staff is if we were to do this, we're to restrict them with buffers that really impact the existing businesses within the community. We really restrict them. That would actually impact about twenty-seven of them, would have to some kind of impact on their business. So that brings up the next question is the state's gonna be issuing licenses here in two thousand twenty-five and they're limiting the number of them. So the screen here is from a presentation that the state gave, the OMC provided to all the cities. And if you look under cannabis retailer, the pre-approval ones, the one I was talking about earlier, so there's a certain number that are gonna be pre-approved before the main batch of approvals are gonna happen. So there is a hundred and fifty-eight general licenses for retail. There's eight hundred and sixty-four cities in the, in the state. So the odds of one getting one, plus Minneapolis-St. Paul being big higher populations, we're probably thinking in Burnsville about maybe one, two of these licenses being issued to a user within the city. So in the grand scheme of things, it's not gonna be like, I think lots of cities went into it thinking it's gonna be the wild, wild west. There's gonna be a lot of users popping up all over the place. No, it's not the case because it's really regulated at the state by the number of licenses they're gonna be issuing per year. So with that information available, we brought five policy questions to the city council at their August twenty-seventh meeting. And so the first one was, should cannabis retail be permitted in districts with existing off-sale liquor, tobacco, or just general retail sales? And the consensus, consensus among councils, yes. Let's allow them in areas where we already allow for retail sales within the community and where tobacco sales and our similar uses are permitted.
Two, before you move on, did you have a question? I saw a little flinch.
Well, I was gonna go back to the buffers, so I just was curious from your perspective what the advantages and disadvantages are. It's apparent to me that this is very restricting if we maximize the buffers. So as an economy, I mean, I know you're saying one to two is likely, but why would we want to maximize buffers?
It's, it's, it depends on when you look at the map, where their commercial areas and their proximity to these uses are. So for the most part, for schools, for example, most of these uses that can occur are away from them for retail sales. That's the only one we can limit. That's the one that, you know, we can only put buffers around retail. We can't do it around manufacturing or anything else. So for the most part, our schools and stuff are buffered from these uses as they're in commercial districts and a lot of our schools are in more residential districts. Although there is a few charter schools that are in commercial districts, as we're all aware. But it's for the most part from a planning perspective, it does give us a tool and play, and the toolbox that we can go back to. Right now, the council's direction was not to do buffers at this time, as it is restrictive on here, but let's say we do as we go into this, we find out there is nuisance complaints in our stuff. We can always come back and take a look at. And that was one of the questions that the city council asked, is this is not a one-time, we're not, we're not gonna adopt this and never come back. We're gonna come back and keep watching this because this is a new, a new use that we're not aware of yet. So as time goes on, we'll probably go in there and make some changes to the existing ordinance or the proposed ordinance, I should say.
So I had a question on the buffers too. Of the existing THC businesses that have permits, how many of those would be within the school buffer if you got rid of all of the other buffers?
Want to say if I remember correct. Do this quick. I had a feeling that might have been a question, so I do have a slide on that one. There's very few. The ones that are be impacted are actually the district center.
Sure.
There is some activities there, there's a daycare and such. And then the other one would be, this used to be a school property, but it's no longer. It just got picked up. There is a, a school use in there, but not related to the actual school district. So there is a few of them out there that would be impacted by, now, these were just your, usually these are like your liquor stores currently and or a smoke shop or something like those uses, not necessarily straight-up dispensaries.
So, and that's considering the thousand-foot buffer, which we could reduce to five hundred feet?
Yep, yep. So some cities did do around us, I believe, I believe Lakeville reduced theirs. I think it's down to five hundred. I know St. Paul did three fifty. So all depends and depends on what the, what the appetite is for using buffers.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on the buffers? So allow them and then the same thing, you know, when we're looking at cultivating and research, manufacturing, distribution, the council thoughts were allow them in areas where industrial uses are permitted with, the big thing they want to make sure is that there is some kind of performance standard that goes with it, especially on odor. A lot of times when you're manufacturing or cultivating, there's a strong odor that can come with that. So that's why when we propose the ordinance here in the future, a conditional use permit is more than likely required for cultivating. And then odor suppression is gonna be required, something to reduce the impact of odor. From all the reading that I've done on this use, there's one thing you can't get away from is the odor. So a lot of times they do have air handlers, a different kind of mechanisms to reduce the odor and impacts on the surrounding area. So council's direction was again to permit them in areas where similar uses are permitted in our industrial district.
The order would be the same as any other kind of business that has, produces some type of order, right? So.
Correct. We had a similar, we have a user currently in the community, can't think of the name of it, that produces ingredients. And there's a lot of complaints that came up from that. So the city worked with the applicant to put some order control on that facility. I believe it's off the, it's in our I three zoning district, kind of off by Southern South Cross there. Something ingredients, I apologize. New guy, don't know the name. But I know that we did, they did work with us and they, we worked, our staff worked to eliminate that concern. Again, another question we brought up was like, there's gonna be setback standards for residentially zoned districts and cannabis uses. They agreed as long as odor mitigation is controlled. Yeah, you know, there shouldn't be any concerns with them going in there. And that's why we're looking at doing a conditional use permit on some of these uses, especially cultivating, so that we can have really, have those standards in there and have the authority to enforce. Next question is, should there be performance standards for cannabis uses such as odor mitigation? Consensus was yes, that are consistent with state statute requirements. The state statute and the language that it provides does have language in there about odor mitigation. So we do, in the draft language that we'll see in upcoming meeting here for the code, we do have odor mitigation standards in there. And there's also other standards that we have in there as well, security, signage, some other, you know, you have to be licensed with the state, parking requirements. So I'll make it very clear. And then the buffers, we kind of talked about this, you know, should there be buffers? Right now, the council's direction was not to implement buffers, but this is something we always can come back to. And as this evolves and keep an eye on it, we can always implement those at a later date. So we'll keep an eye on that one.
Wouldn't it be difficult to put buffers in later? If, if you have existing businesses already in there and they fall within that buffer zone, they're gonna be gonna have to add it in.
Yes, that's true, but at the same time, we can also kind of learn from what we're seeing. And then as new ones come online, we can put the buffers in place then if we do have some non-conformities. You know, it's, every city's kind of doing it a little differently. Like on the screen here is a Jason Community Review. Eagan's not doing any kind of buffers at this time. So a lot of communities are kind of not doing the buffers. Some are. Apple Valley does have buffers. Lakeville does have them around schools, I believe is the only one they did. So I think Bloomington does have two limits on this here. So we're not talking about this tonight, but as part of the business registration, you can put a cap on the number of, number of retail establishments within your community. So if you have a, the minimum is one per every twelve thousand five hundred people. So you can have one cannabis retail establishment for every twelve thousand persons, twelve thousand five hundred, I think it is. So in our case, we could have limited at six. So that's a conversation for another day. We're not doing that as part of the zoning because that'd be into our business regulations. But some cities are doing that. They're capping them. You know, again, if you look at the amount of licenses they're gonna be issuing, you know, it's gonna be hard pressed for some time for you to get six unless you're like a Minneapolis-St. Paul or any of these larger communities. But everyone's doing performance standards, so we're following in line there for the surrounding communities and everything as well. Next steps for us is currently drafting the ordinance. It's almost done. Should get our attorney. Hopefully we'll be back in front of you at October twenty-eighth with the actual draft code and then we'll be bringing it to the city council in November the nineteenth. And then Title III, which will not be coming before the planning commission, but we'll be going to the city council. That's where all the fees, registration and all that would be we take care of. So it's a brief overview of it. I'm open for any questions. Kind of ran through it quick and I, so.
It's, as I was reading through the information from the state, it seems, is it gonna be a lot of work for city staff? You know, part of the approval process at the state level is to get, make, you know, is to have the city verify these things and, and approve the location, et cetera. Is this gonna be a lot of work for city staff?
Yeah, so some, that's a great question, Chair. So some cities, what they're doing as part of the registration fee, they're increasing it to the max because they don't know what that fee is gonna be. And that'd probably be our recommendation, the council will be, have the max because we don't know what the time's gonna be going into this.
Sure.
So at that time, we can also reduce that at a later date. So at least then we know that we are collecting enough to make sure we monitor this, you know, because, because we're in charge of enforcement and zoning. So that's the thought a lot of communities are doing.
Thank you.
So on the licenses, you had the pre-approval and the general license. Are they mutually exclusive? So the number you listed in pre-approval, is that contained within the general license?
That's correct. It's all in one. So this is a hundred and fifty total. There's thirty-six pre-approval. That's also included within that total overall, a hundred and fifty that we'll be issuing in the first year. It's kind of unknown for us. A lot of cities, we're kind of all kind of in the same boat here. So it's kind of, there'll be a little bit of a learning curve, I think. We'll see a lot. And also the state statute can change. It did change since in the two thousand twenty-four session. It can also change again. So it's kind of a work in progress.
Have any businesses expressed any interest in this in Burnsville?
That's a good question, yes. I've been contacted, we have all been contacted by different users, locally and outstate. Just interested in what our position's gonna be. I actually got an email last night from one of them. So just a lot of interest. A lot of times what we're seeing is people are just getting ahead of it. They want to know where the city is at with it and what your regulations are gonna be. So then they know to contact you in the future or even apply for a license.
I'm just really interested in the licensing side of it, if we're only going to have five or six. And that's a state law limit, right?
Well, that's, we could place a limit, but we don't have to.
Oh, okay.
So.
So it could be more than.
It could be more than that.
Okay.
So you could limit it at that number if you, if the council chooses to do that.
Okay.
Or we can leave it open as well.
Got it.
When they apply for their license, do they have to specify a location?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yep. And that's why we're kind of gonna get ahead of this. So then if a user does want to apply for a license, they know where to go. There's at least one or two current users that are hoping to get a license within the community. So they've been asking, inquiring a lot about where we're at with the process. But the nice part is council direction at the workshop was to not be restrictive and treat cannabis like any other use in the community.
I think the council should reconsider the buffer on schools. I think having no buffer on schools, make it three hundred feet. That's the size of a football field, at least. You know, public perception is going to be that we at least don't want a business attached to a school that's selling. You know, you think the heart of the city area, three hundred feet, anybody who's already selling THC drinks or something like that, they're still going to be able to. But I agree with Commissioner John that pulling that back after the fact is going to be more challenging. So I would almost suggest coming at it the other angle where you start with the buffer, especially around schools, and then you reassess.
That's exactly what I was gonna say. But I was gonna say Timmerman instead of John there.
Yeah, I would agree. It's like you need to maintain the buffers around the schools. Would you say that pretty much wherever they locate, they have to come in to get approval for the location so that if they were close to a school, even without buffers, you could ask them to move?
We could, we could, can't necessarily, you can ask them to move or guide them in a different direction. We just can't prohibit them from going in there without the buffers. So we can, we always get users that come in, they're looking for a location. A lot of times, a lot of these users are cognizant of that. They don't want to be next to them. They want to be good neighbors. So they do look to locate in areas that are more beneficial for their use. We get them, it's like any other use, they look at their client and their clientele or areas they want to be. And so that's all I would expect. Because we did have one user reach out that was really interested in a warehouse space in the community, but it was adjacent to residential and the landlord, the broker for that site told him, you know, yes, it could go here, but does he really want to deal with the impacts of that being adjacent to neighborhood? You know, you, there's, so they ended up looking at a different site, but it's kind of the angle he would take.
Are we looking at other states? I mean, we're not the first state to do this, so is that what you're kind of gearing in on to see what worked, what hasn't worked? In coming up with some of these suggestions?
So from a city perspective?
Yeah.
So my, what I've been looking at is all adjacent communities have been doing it. I looked a little bit at some other states, but the regulations are so different, it's hard to kind of really pinpoint. So that's why the approach has kind of been, well, let's kind of see what happens here. Seeing as the limited number of licenses that are coming out, instead of buying a, you know, putting a moratorium in there, putting a lot of restrictions, let's see how this plays out and then we can always come back and take a look at that. That's the kind of approach we've kind of been taking with it. And the direction we received.
I assume the priorities of Burnsville.
That's right.
So that's all I got. Any more questions?
Thank you very much. As you said, next step will be approval of the zoning amendment in, at the end of October. Is that correct?
That's the goal. We'll have it here on the twenty-eighth. Obviously, we have to work through a couple things of legal and other items. So that's the tentative goal, is the next meeting we'll have this before council or before the commission. It's a goal.
Yeah. Well, thank you for the introduction.
Yeah, you're welcome. Yeah, I think, you're welcome.
Um, okay, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda. If there, are there any further questions before we move on? Okay, next, uh, part of our agenda is updates. And what I see is the one thing listed on the updates is that our next planning commission meeting is October twenty-eighth. Are there any updates from commissioners? Any further updates from staff?
Yes, a quick update at the last, uh, council meeting on the eighth. Um, they did approve the preliminary and final plat for one-two-nine-zero-one Aldridge Avenue, um, Chinese Gourmet. Previously, you guys saw that. There was a drive-through request on there and preliminary and final plat. However, the applicant has withdrew the request for the drive-through at the time. They're proposing to make additional improvements to the site, which would require planning commission review. So, staff worked with the applicant to move forward with the plats, and they'll be making an application here, actually, I think, next week on revised plans for, to be reviewed again. Drive-through is still there, but they're also making smaller site and building improvements. So, um, we'll see that here coming up, but the council did approve the final plat, preliminary plat at that meeting. That's it.
Great. Uh, last item on our agenda is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion? And seconded? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.